Board of Education.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mrs. Ferris is absent?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Here.
Mr. Postal?
Here.
Mrs. Urquhart?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, now we have public participation and our first speaker is Dave Cecarelli.
Eighty-seven. Eighty-seven staff members have left the district this calendar year alone. Out of those eighty-seven, sixty-two have resigned. I know at least two of them who have resigned because of the installation of social emotional learning and the way this district is headed. Out of sixty that are left, I bet there's a good percentage of people that have resigned because of the direction the administration is going in. Elmhurst Parents of Integrity for Curriculum, EPC, is a Chicago parent-driven organization working to reclaim their schools from activists imposing harmful ideologies, agendas like SEL. I see an information piece from EPC laid out about ten years of SEL in the Chicago Public School District. So between the years 2010, 2021, seventy-nine percent had... In 2010, math efficiency was seventy-nine percent, reading proficiency was at seventy percent with a budget of four point four eight million. In 2021, math proficiency dropped to seventeen percent, reading proficiency to twenty-one percent with a six point three seven billion dollar deficit or budget. It's a forty-two percent jump in budget, seventy-eight point five percent down in math, seventy percent down in reading. So what do parents need to know? SEL is a revenue-generated psychological manipulative scam. When schools tell you it's evidence-based, it's based on fraudulent data by woke organizations that sell SEL. When a school tells you SEL increases graduation rate, that's not true either. It simply means that they're graduating students who are illiterate. When students tell you that SEL improves behavior and schools, that's not true. It simply means that they are no longer reporting or punishing inappropriate behavior. So what does this have to do with our district? Obviously, SEL is already here. Right at school, headquarter headquarters are located in the suburb of Chicago, which is founded in 2011, which is one year after the data that I just mentioned started being gathered. Right at school promotes and teaches SEL in our not-so-recently-popular new before-and-after-school care program. Parents need to keep their ears and eyes open. There's a lot of our futures at stake here. And libel, L-I-B-E-L, or liable, L-I-A-B-L-E, Ms. Chapman, am I going to be responsible for using my First Amendment rights on Facebook? If you have something to say, you can call me or email me. Don't try my family members. Thank you.
That goes both ways, sir. Okay, next we have Steve Mahaznik.
All right, so I've lived in Berea thirty-five years, and these are the worst grades I've seen for our school district since I graduated in '05. I hold all of you accountable. 2005, we were at the top of our school district in the state. Now, we get fifteen out of twenty-five stars. Fifteen divided by twenty-five is sixty percent. That is a D. Some of you have been on there quite a while, and I hope this backpack bill passes because I will pull my kids out so quick. I have four that go here. I will not let my kids be in a school district that is at a D level. Don't tell me it's COVID. Solon, forty-five hundred kids in their school district. Perfect. Strongsville, just down the road, fifty-four hundred kids in their school district. Twenty-three out of twenty-five stars. So don't give me the COVID. That has nothing to do with it. It's this push of SEL, focus on math, reading, writing, history, science. That's what you get our tax money for. Everything else is the parent's responsibility, not yours. My responsibility is to welfare my kids. And if you guys can't improve these scores for our kids and have them competing with other schools in the district, you're going to start losing many, many more people. And I know in 2025, I know in the next couple of years, you're going to try and pass a levy. At this rate, I will not vote for it. And I have voted for every other levy you guys have put out on the agenda. So if you don't pick it up, I will pull my kids and I will work three jobs to send them to a private school that will get them ready for life and get them ready for college or a trade. Right now, you guys are not, and it's sad. Also, why are parents not receiving transportation letters, letters from the Transportation Department about times that the school bus pickup has changed? That Stop Finder app does not work a hundred percent of the time. You're relying on an app. Why can't we just send a letter out? Hey, some things have changed. My kids' time changed ten minutes. If we didn't look at that Stop Finder app and it was, and thank God it was working, they would have been late to school because I would have had to drop them off. Also, middle school had an incident on the football team. A kid who's a star player, sorry about that, gets a two-game suspension because he's going around for the first three weeks smacking kids on the back. Last time I checked, that's assault. Why is he still on the team? Not a few years ago, you had that hazing incident. Why is he not being taken care of? Why is he still allowed to play? Academics first, sports later.
Next, we have James Grash.
Discipline is a disgrace in this school system. My pronouns are bite me. I want to thank the teachers that I met at the open house a couple of weeks ago. I ran into many of you. Do you like the messaging I had? I spoke to quite a few of you. I know most teachers in this district are good teachers and want to be good teachers. And we also know there's a couple that aren't too good, at least. I'll remind everybody about the Pride family-friendly events, Christine Aguilera walking around on stage. Who's Christine Aguilera? Teenage kids, like teenage girls like Christine Aguilera. There's her message. I'm going to read as much as I can from this letter. It's a warning from a teacher to parents about SEL second step. Resignation letter from Mr. Sam Crowley, beloved music teacher at Draper Park Middle School for being required to teach the social emotional learning program second step. Unit one, general concerns about the unit. No discussion of what a worthy goal is. No discussion of what to do when a goal is not reached, achieved, even when you are, even when you plan and work hard. Distinct anti-family undertones. BLM propaganda included in the video. I'm happy to discuss just being just and helping to end suffering, but when the only visual cue given to the students to consider as the narrator speaks about the hardship of dealing with the injustice and suffering in the world is video footage of a Black Lives Matter protest? It is biased. It is propaganda. Propaganda has no place in our schools. From the video section, video examples promote students becoming activists and starting campaigns around the school. Activism is loud, pushy, and almost always places people into a closed mindset. This is counterproductive. Concerns across the lesson video script and student handout. A discussion about reaching our goals and identifying and planning for roadblocks that might keep them from reaching a goal. The lessons gives the following scenario. Students has a goal. The student's parents say that the goal is not an appropriate goal to the student. The lesson asks the students to decide if their parents are an internal roadblock or an external roadblock. Teaching students that their parents are roadblocks is not acceptable. That is anti-family. Concerns from the lesson video in the video section and with the lesson conclusions. Games of Thrones reference in the video. Cartoon student has a book on the desk called Game of Dragons. Game of Thrones is reprehensible media containing pornography, overt and explicit violence, and all manners of debauchery. The prequel series to The Game of Thrones is House of Dragons. Discovered this when I Googled game of dragons to see what came up. There is no place for this in the schools. Title nine, the Democrats want to destroy girl sports. Can't let that happen, the Democrats. They're radicalized, everybody knows that. Closing, I'll just say, let's go, Brandon.
Next, we have Khalid Thomas.
Good evening. So I'll first start off by introducing myself. I'm Khalid Thomas. I am with Americans for Prosperity. What I work a lot with parents, I talk a lot with parents in and around Northeast Ohio on some of the issues they have with their school boards. So I hear a lot of passion, I hear a lot of discontent. I'll first start off by saying I don't have kids at all. I don't have kids in the school system, of course, but I am here to lend support to my dear friends who have kids in the school system. So I show up and speak on behalf of someone who has worked in the correctional system in Kiowa County in mental health. So I've also been a reading tutor for middle school kids. So I have some passion about educating kids. I've also dealt with kids who didn't turn out quite the right way. I grew up in a Cleveland school system, which talked a lot about a lot of divisive issues in the 1980s, which I didn't grow out of until I started really traveling the world and being around different people. So I'm able to see some of the things that I've learned in my life, how to affect kids, how to make them better people. So I have a nonprofit organization that I developed with a good friend of mine, and we, our goal is to make kids better people, make them better citizens, more engaged, more respectful, and produce better American citizens. That's the only way we're going to get out of what we're in now, is to make, produce more educated and engaged citizens. So that's my goal. So my reason for being here is to just give you some perspective on what happens when, I'll just use this term, minority kids are made to feel victimized. It is not a good thing. There are some things that affected me growing up based on just the things that I was told, even by some educators. The best way for children is to focus on the basics of education, but also focus on principles which ascend race and identity and gender and all these things that are being focused on now. I think it's having a more negative effect, in my opinion, on the development of kids and young people where they're starting to find more reasons not to like each other. It's not bringing them together, it's sort of pushing people more apart. And I think that the parents have real legitimate concerns about some of the things that they are being told by their kids when they come home. I'm hearing parents talk about their kids, saying, hey, I could be a boy, I could be a girl, and this child is eight years old. So that's producing a lot of problems, not to say that that's going on in this school district, but I think parents are really, I think they should be heard and listened to because in addition to the pressures that they have as being parents, and some of you are parents also, they have to worry about what their kids are being taught in these classrooms, and the results are not there. So I think that I'm hearing a common theme of this, what I'm hearing today from parents. So thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, next we have our Director of People Services, Lori Sanson, with a presentation on SEL.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to say thank you for allowing me to share our current plans and what we're doing in Berea City Schools with SEL. First, wanted to go ahead and start off with what the definition of SEL is. I know there's a lot of different things out there, but I pulled the definition from Castle that you can see up there. And I think if you kind of summarize, obviously, certain words are highlighted up there, which are key. And overall, I like to kind of think of social emotional learning, it's just the process of learning skills to understand and manage emotions and make responsible decisions in order to achieve goals that are positive. So that's the goal, and I'm sorry, that's what SEL is, and then we're going to go into a little bit more about what SEL looks like here in Berea. And the next thing that you see up there are those five competencies. So everything that we do is basically focused on those five different competencies, competencies, excuse me. Self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And these are all connected to the skills that everyone needs in order to be successful in the trades, the careers, college, whatever you choose to do in life and in your professions after, after your K-12 education. So I kind of wanted to start off and make an analogy and kind of compare it to what we all have a common knowledge of, doctors. And so when I think about it, there's, we all have different needs. And when we start at the beginning, all of us have a need to go see a family doctor, and that is sufficient for the majority of people. But there are times when you go to a family doctor and they say, you know what, you need to go to see a specialist because you need additional care in order to be healthy. And so that's where you can see it moves on to, like, we kind of consider family doctor tier one. And in the schools, we talk about tiers. So tier two would be going to see a specialist. And perhaps you work with a specialist, a physical therapist, and so on for a period of time, and that doesn't address your health needs either. And so you have to go further and go to see a surgeon, and that would be like a tier three. And so we use that same level, that tiered concept, when we talk about teaching our kids. So we use it with academics, but we also use it with behaviors and understanding that emotional and social and emotional learning. And so when we look at tier one in Berea City Schools, you often hear it referred to as PBIS. Well, PBIS, it starts with tier one. And tier one is what do all of our kids need? And so that's really focused off of our culture playbook, which talks about conceptually what we expect of our kids and all of our, all the titans from staff to students, and then goes into also the matrices, which talk about the expectations. What does behavior look like? Like, we want to have great kids. What does that look like when you're walking in the hallways? What does that look like when you're in the classroom and the cafeteria and so on? And so that's where our PBIS starts, is making sure that all of our kids know what those expectations are for those, those locations, because that's about managing their behaviors and self-awareness of what they're doing. That was a, they kick off at the beginning of this year. PBIS has been around for some, several years, but we made a concerted effort to focus on it when we started this school year with our staff and our students about revisiting this and making sure it was very aware. So over the first two weeks of school, each building set a schedule to talk about the, all the matrices in the different locations, and they would have a day that they would focus on the cafeteria and emphasize that in each of the buildings and so on. So that happened over the first two weeks of school this year, revisiting that with a, with a focused area. So like I said, that tier one sounded like your, your family doctor, what's going on there, the PBIS that we just talked about. There's Titan Team Time, there's morning meetings, there's class lessons with the school counselor. Those are different things, examples of some of the things that happen with all of our students, particularly at the elementary level and up into some of the middle school grades as well. So, and you can see a cone over on the bottom, right-hand side. That green is all of our kids. And like the tier one that we talked about, that is effective for approximately about eighty percent of our kids. We can provide those, those matrices of expectations, we teach them the expectations, we reinforce when they're doing what they're expected to do, and they're successful and they don't need additional support in learning and instruction. Then there are some kids that do need additional support and maybe some extra reminders and things like that, and extra instruction. And so that's what our tier two looks like. Those could potentially be small groups. And when kids are involved in small groups of instruction in a focused area, that's with parent consent. And then we have check-ins and check-outs as well, as a frequent, frequently used. So then you have an additional, like the top of that cone. So like, like some of us need to go see surgeons after we go and see a specialist. Some of our kids need even additional, more time, more focus, more reminders and things like that in order to be successful with those expectations that we have for all of our kids in the buildings. And so those supports that, what that looks like could be additional, like perhaps more time that they spend in a small group to, to focus on that area of need. Also, we have individual counseling, and that's all with consent from parents. With our student family support specialists, who are licensed social workers, it could be a specialist from Ohio Guidestone. And then also, there's an opportunity for referrals to community resources to support students and families as well. So that really focuses on our PBIS and our expectations and so on. An additional piece of what we're doing this year is a universal screener. And this has been something that we've researched, a team of school counselors, social workers, school psychologists, administrators, and then support from our ESC, our regional support system, and going through, and we spent a significant amount of time researching all the different opportunities that were out there, options for us as a district, and what we wanted to get out of this and where we wanted to go. And our conclusion last spring was that we have identified two different screening tools that would be piloted this school year. And so you can see the general timeline that's up there. So right now, we're in the process of informing our stakeholders, starting here this evening. Parents and, parents and staff will be informed over the next two weeks about the specific details and how it impacts them. And then we would be administering the screener over the first two weeks of October. And then the next step would be analyzing that data and deciding how we would go ahead and intervene based on the data that we got, that we received from the, from the results. And then the intervention, intervening would happen. I have some additional pieces for, just verbally to share with the screener. So we have two different screeners. One, like I said, we're piloting at first grade, and the intent of that was to say, well, we've had our kiddos in first, when they're in first grade, we've had them in our schools for one year under their belt, and then we're going to go ahead and do the screening with them. The screening that we identified was, it's the DESA screener. And that is basically a staff survey. So the homeroom teacher will go ahead and answer eight questions about a student, of observations, observations that they've seen the student, what they've seen them doing, and it's based on, it's a strength-based focus. So I've seen the students express care for their, for their, their peers. They follow directions, things like that. So it's about what is a student able to do? And the teacher goes ahead and answers those questions, and we'll get some information about what the student, they're all focused on the areas of self-awareness, responsibility, social awareness, relationships, and so on, those, going back to those competencies. We'll get that information, like I said, we'll walk through the analysis of what, where do we need to intervene? Where are our kids struggling, where they need additional instruction? And then move on from there for planning purposes. The other grades that are going to be piloting are fifth grade and ninth grade. And when we looked at that, and part of the research of last year, there's lots of different options, but we wanted to make sure that there was student voice in those surveys. And so we selected a survey that it would be students completing the surveys based on their perception of their own, of themselves. So those students will do that. It's not, it's not identifiable, so it's anonymous when the students complete the surveys. Again, it's based on strength-focused. So it's strength-focused, but it asks questions that are involving, do you feel supported at school, in the community, home? Do you feel safe in things about expressing care, about challenges when they, when they're for growth, providing support? And do they feel those things in the environment where they are? Our intent from the fifth grade and the ninth grade, and taking a survey as this one that I've described, is, and it's called DAP, it's Developmental Asset Profile, is that we're going to get information, basically, we kept calling it like the health of the, of the culture of the school, of the PBIS system, so tier one. Do our kids feel supported and connected to adults in their life, whether it be at school or at home and in the community and different aspects? So those are general questions that will assess that. And again, it's anonymous, so we will get holistic data that we will take a look at and then intervene based on that. When we get the results back from each of those surveys, we have it lined up that we will have a conference call with the vendor, and they're going to walk us through analyzing those data so it will help us to plan our next steps. And the team of people that will be working with the vendors when we do that analysis of the data, will again, going back to those that were part of the, part of the team that did the research and selected these tools, which are your school counselors, social workers, administrators from the building, school psychologists, and social workers. And like I said, this is a pilot year. So after we go through this, we will be looking at, going back to the PBIS. So PBIS measures, they meet on a week, I'm sorry, on a monthly basis in each of the buildings, there's a team, and they look at data. What's going on in the, in the school? How is, they'll look at attendance, they can look at grades, they look at behavior referrals, and look at all of that data to say, how are our kids feeling connected in the school? Are they, and is that being demonstrated in the behavior and so on, and the expectations with our matrices? So they will continue to gather, excuse me, gather that information, and that will help to guide our next steps along the way. And part of their responsibilities as a PBIS team, which we're really focusing on this year, is making sure that that information's communicated with all the stakeholders. And I think if you've seen, I've noticed it for sure, in each of the student, or the family newsletters that are going out, there's an emphasis on PBIS and what's going on and an acknowledgement of the kids and what they're doing with the, and by showing those responsible behaviors in the school and so on. So we'll continue to communicate with families through those means. That's all I have.
Can you, just for people who may be watching who don't know what PBIS stands for?
Sure.
Can you tell us what that is?
Positive Behavior Intervention and Support.
And how long has that been a focus area in the state?
I, honestly, over a decade. It's been some time. Certainly, it's gotten stronger, and it has been, like anything, it needed to be revisited. like anything, it needed to be revisited. So what we did is we really just started the year off with an emphasis to say, we are making sure that we are not only just demonstrate, or, that, I'm sorry, sharing with, by posting those expectations, but we are intentionally teaching those expectations again. And it doesn't matter what age you are, like we all need reminders. When I'm driving down the street, that speed sign is a good reminder to me to keep myself in check. The posters that have the matrices with the expectations are a good reminder for students regardless of their age, from little ones, from kindergarten, all the way up through high school.
Lori, correct me if I'm wrong. So this actually, the district started this in 2018, 19. Was, that wasn't that the first year?
For the matrix.
For the matrix and the rollout of that. And I do, so I do think then, when 19, 1920 hit pandemic, it did slow down the actual rollout and focus on, on PBIS and what we're doing.
Correct, correct.
On your first slide, you had the definition of SEL and you cited CASL. What is CASL?
So I, let me see if I have, I know I have what it stands for. It's an organization that works around the, those competencies. So they help to identify those different competencies that I, the five of them that I pointed out.
It's a national organization that's not just.
It is a national organization, yes. And there's a lot of work that they do, so around the SEL and with counselors and so on. But the collaborative for academic and social and emotional learning.
Thank you. And on slide number six, you reference morning meetings as part of the support that is offered to all learners. Can you describe what happens in those morning meetings?
So that is something new that BPE is doing this school year. And it's about just getting connected to kids in the beginning of the day and saying, you know, just, it's a check-in. So when we have an opportu, when we have a concerted effort to say, like, let's take a couple of minutes and check in and see where everyone's at. Like, how's your morning going? How was your weekend? You're going to be able to see if, if, you know, Mr. Mack is really struggling this morning. It gives an opportunity and then we can say, okay, like, let's, let's have a, you know, like, let's help you to make sure that your day is better and, and so on. So it's a check-in to kind of make sure that we're off on the right track and build that connectedness with adults in the building.
With the class lessons, is there a programmed type set of lessons? Or, you know, what's, how do they, counselors know what they're going to be doing? Grade level?
So there's different, again, it goes back to those five competencies always. So they, they talk about that. When the kids get a little bit older, there could be different things that are involved with career readiness as well. So it's a little bit more career-focused. But their classroom lessons are, they develop those. And again, it goes back to, you know, we can give some general topics and it would fall under those categories. But it goes back to, for example, if there's something that's going on in, in the fifth grade, let's say, and there's a commonality of a concern that they're seeing at the fifth grade level, they may focus their lessons on like that month, on what they're seeing to intervene from a big picture of, of the behaviors that they're experiencing so they can intervene. But again, it goes back to those competencies that they would be focused in those areas.
That information be shared then with parents through newsletters?
Yeah, and, and what we can do is we can put, we can make that part of our efforts this year to make sure that it is included going forward in the newsletters. That being said, it's not something, like I said, we, that we can put out and say, this is the plan for the year and it's going to be set because we want to intervene on what we're seeing and what's currently happening. So if something is a concern, they want to intervene and that's the first way to intervene.
What are examples at, more like at the high school level of what's going on?
So the, the high school level doesn't look as much, like it's the PBIS would be, they are making a great, they've made a lot of great strides this year. And I, even starting last year, I'd say like in the December, November, they really made a, a switch over to make sure that they were focusing on PBIS to make sure, again, because just because we're in high school doesn't mean that we all know what the expectations are. And so working on that piece and acknowledging kids for, for demonstrating those, those expected behaviors and so on. At the high school, you're not really seeing whole group lessons. It's not developmentally appropriate. And so it's more so working on, there's, obviously there's lots of different programs that would be focused on what kids' needs are. And so kids fall into different programs or groups, or they could be into small group lessons that would be with a counselor during lunch and learn. And they use it more of the opportunity that it's more of a targeted group rather than whole lessons at that, that secondary level.
I have another question in regard to the data, the fifth and ninth grade. You said it's kind of anonymous.
Yes.
So then, does that data get applied? Because it seems like group data. So to identify like the 15 and 15.
So I think we'll have to look into, I think it all depends on the data that we get back and working with the vendor to say, what are our action steps? If we have a large percentage of kids that have a specific area that's identified, we know we're going to have to do something that's going to be more large scope intervention. And so what that looks like could be a variety of different things. It could be different lessons that go on that would be targeting the entire grade level perhaps, if we saw a tremendous high percentage in one area. We, we will talk through with the counselors and things and if, whether it's, could be, sometimes we have kids that are self-identified saying, well, here's an opportunity. You have an opportunity to participate in this group that talks about building confidence or self-awareness. And they may self-identify. They may have a parent. Sometimes we have that would identify and say, I, my student needs more support in this area. So we'll work through the vendor on what, what options we would do in order to intervene with kids in that way. But we, we did very intentionally, because there are options out there that, and even the, the survey that we did take, we could have chosen the option to make it identifiable, that everyone, I would put Lori Stancen down and there would be a unique identifier attached to me as a person. We had chose not to do that intentionally because sometimes the kids would not be as open and honest if it was attached to their name specifically. And so we felt like it was really important for us to make sure we went to that basic level of support with the tier one and get that sense of the health of the entire school and the connectedness to build there. The other piece, when we did identify these surveys or screeners, they also have the opportunity for us to grow. So if we wanted to move down the, down the road and get a self-identifiable information or have different stakeholders, there's a survey for the, for the staff. There's opportunities for other people to be involved in the future if we want to move in that direction.
For the first graders? You said that the teachers are doing that. Are they doing it for every student or maybe just students that they feel maybe at risk?
No, they will do it for every student. If students will come back based on the results of those, those eight questions, there will be some students that will be, they will recommend doing an additional extended survey for. So what we call, it's the DESA Mini, is the eight questions that everyone will have. And then after that, there will be some students that will get an additional 72 questions, but focused again on those same areas. There's just more questions about it. And then that would be able, we would be able to identify whether an area like self-awareness is a strength for them. But social skills is a area of, an area for instruction, needed instruction for that student.
So in first grade case, it is identif, we do know who each child is.
It is, yes, because teachers are doing it based on their observations of the student over the past month.
And is information going home to parents about these surveys?
So there's general information that's going to go home that will talk about the survey itself to inform parents that this is what's happening. And then after the fact, when we get results, so I, I equate this again. So just like the doctor analogy or academic analogy. So if I was a student in first grade and I was reading above grade level or if I was reading at my expected grade level, I'm not going to necessarily get a, a specific report from the teacher to say, your student's doing what they're expected to do. But if the student was identified and saying, they have an area of, this focus area that is in need, they need additional instruction, that would specifically be communicated to the, to the parents prior to intervening.
That's exactly what this reminds me of when my kids were in elementary school and we needed some reading intervention and they got some extra help. And I read a quote this past week, maybe you did too. It may have been in the Marshall memo that when kids can't read, we don't kick them out of school. But when they can't behave themselves, you know, there are often negative consequences. And I see this as an opportunity to do something good for kids that need some help self-regulating.
Correct, correct.
Any other questions for Lori? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent's update.
I just want to, two things to update you on. One, I do want to talk about Right at School and give you at least an update that we've, we're in a much better place this week with, they had some change in leadership at Right at School. We now have some consistent staff. The issue with staffing with them, the first week that they actually came back is they had a large number of their staff with COVID. And that was just an issue that they deal with, just like we deal with. So I got information today from them, updated that we are, we've got two new folks overseeing our sites. And so far, things are going good this week. So, and they, and last week too. We have some minor things, which we have any time you change programs and start something new. It's just like when we start the new school year. There's always some kind of a hiccup in anything and time works that out. So I think we're in a much better spot than where we were. The only thing I want to update you on, not even update, but just to reiterate. So our letter went out to families in the board and staff last week about our report card. And I would caution anyone in adding up stars. If you really know the new report card system and you can go to the Ohio Department of Education on the letter that we sent home to families, we included a link to the report card, the new guide. Because this system is so different, I encourage everyone to, if you, if you really want to learn more about the report card, to go to the guide on the ODE website. And it just talks about the different areas and it breaks it down. Every area is independent of another area. And it's not that stars are added up. It's that there are stars ranked for each of the area. So for example, in what we shared, and again, Mr. DeSens is doing a full presentation on this at the October 3rd work session. So I encourage anyone to, to tune into that or come to hear some more of the specific detailed information about that. But when we looked at achievement, we did have growth in achievement over the past year. And COVID or not, COVID did affect everything everywhere. And again, I caution, looking at different school districts, different school, no two school districts are alike. And so our growth, at least in achievement, was 6.5 points since 2020, which for us is a good gain. Even in progress, we showed overall growth and progress in, in English Language Arts and Math. I will tell you, one of the, the areas that we are most proud of is gap closing. And again, to learn more about gap closing, gap closing is basically how well schools are doing in closing the achievement gap between students based on income, race, ethnicity and disability. And we, we had four stars for that. And that is huge because we know that when we close the gap, we also increase achievement. So for the district to, to have gained there was, I thought was really, really, really good. You know, the questions come, and I know Mr. DeSens is going to talk about this when he presents, but you know, the questions are, you know, what are we doing and what, and have we done? And he's going to, he's going to reflect on this a little bit in his presentation. But we've been doing this since I've been in the district for three years. We're really focusing on making sure we're streamlined what we're doing, making sure we're strengthening what we're doing in our buildings. We are heavily involved in the TBT process, the OIP process, if you want to call it. And then also folks, focusing on our instructional strategies. The other thing where we hold ourselves accountable, where we hold our, our directors accountable is the work that we're doing with the Portrait of Titan and especially the work that's going to come out of the, the priority areas that we have established and identified in the revised strategic plan. So I think, again, you know, I, I will say, and I know Nick's going to talk about it, an area that we had concern about was our graduation rate was not where it, it had been. So the board knows ahead of time. Graduation rate is actually the class of 2021, not this most recent class of 2022. So it's always a year behind. And that was the year of the pandemic. And we had a great deal, Dr. Smithberger can tell you and its counselors can tell you, we had a great deal, we had a great number of students who dropped out of school. Dropped out. Of which, when it comes down to some of those things, that was a year that we did not have the ombudsman program for those students. And those, most of those students went to online and were not, did not do well in online learning. I, I will tell you right now, when we see those numbers next year, I guarantee you those numbers are going to look significantly different because of the work that Julie D. Fran has done in the Titan Academy and the work that the high school and high school counselors have done in identifying kids, getting kids to come back to finish school or getting kids who are in school thinking about dropping out, who are credit deficient to stay in and for us just to educate them a little differently. So again, I know Nick's going to update you on that. But I do think, you know, looking at the email and looking at some of the highlights, there, there are, there are some, there are a lot of things that we are proud of in the work that we have done in the last couple of years. That's all I have.
Item number two, it is recommended the memorandum of understanding between the Berea City School Board of Education and the Berea Federation of Teachers be adopted as outlined in the exhibit.
No move.
Second.
So I just want to say, we missed this in contract negotiations. This actually should have been put into the contract. So with, we, we had this on two years ago, Vicky. Knew it had to go, I don't, I don't know if we put it on last year. We should have wrapped it into negotiation. So I've already talked to union leadership and we are talking about just doing a correction and adding this to the contract so we don't have to do another MOU next year too.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number three, it's recommended that items D4 to D31 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless the Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
No move.
Second.
Just a couple of things from the consent. One of the things was, if you notice, there were the one item that says extended care coverage, which might have seemed a little confusing. When our staff had to cover for, when Right at School didn't have their license for that first week, I billed them for every hour that our folks worked. So you're going to see a second one of these, right Jill?
Yes.
You're going to see a second one of these for Big Creek, but this is the first payment. So we as a district are not paying this. We invoiced Right at School, Right at School sent us a check. And then now we are going to pay those staff members for that work.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Number 32, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the limited utilization of non-bachelor's degree substitute teachers for the 2022, 23 and 2023, 24 school years as outlined in the exhibit.
No move.
Second.
So this, this actually did come out of COVID too with the need for substitutes in staff. So what this basically says is that we can recommend to NCSSA, because we do not hire our own subs, but to NCSSA to hire someone who has a high school diploma. But we're very, what was the word you used Vince? Judicious in who those folks are. So this would be someone, for example, this could be a college student. And we only do it for kids who are enrolled, I shouldn't say kids, it for kids who are enrolled, I shouldn't say kids, for anyone enrolled in higher ed who has some kind of a connection to an education-related field. So we have in the past, like during the pandemic, we've hired our student teachers actually to be substitute teachers. So this is, this was another provision that was allowed to us this year, and so if we need to use it, we can. So it's a nice thing to have.
And it was allowed to us through House Bill 583?
Yes, yes.
I attended a webinar on this recently, and even though this is being allowed across the country, I understand that still most of the subs have bachelor's degrees, the vast majority.
The vast majority of them have bachelor's degrees, and we used it last year Vince, or two years ago? And it was for, they were, they were actually our, so the nice thing was, they were our, some of our student teachers, so they were here finishing school, student teacher, and they also had a mentor. So it wasn't like we just threw them into a classroom, just sub in a classroom. They also threw their college experience, were still given a mentor in our schools who were overseeing what they were doing.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 33, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the contract with Strongsville Psychological Services for the Employee Assistance Program effective September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
This is an annual agreement we have with them.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Number 34, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the memo of understanding between Baldwin Wallace University and the Berea City School District for clinical and field experience placement for the 2022-23 school year, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to jump ahead, too. Also, this one and the next one with Cleveland State are both for us to contract to have student teachers through them.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number 35, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between Cleveland State University's College of Education and Human Services, Cleveland State University's College of Science and Health Professions, and the Berea City School District Partnership to support licensure preparation in grades pre-K through 12 from August 2022 to August 2026, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Number 36, it's recommended that items D37 to D40 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved.
Second.
This is actually for us to have interns for, I think, this one both, this one has both for dieticians and for nurses through Case Western. Oh, wait, what? We're on the. Oh.
Steps.
Wait, where did, did we miss? The one with Case Western? That's what I thought, okay. So this is my agenda that was printed on Friday from Jen. Apologize for that. Everything in the consent is just annual contract renewals as necessary. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number 41, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the advertisement to receive bids for the purchase of four transit vans, school bus, chassis, and bodies.
So moved.
Second.
This is just to allow us to enter the Ohio Schools Council Cooperative bid purchasing for, for vans, for vans. We have six right now, but the funds only allow for us to get four. So we're going to enter that bid process. As soon as the bids come down, we'll approve. Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Number 42, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the purchase of new curriculum for college composition and prep from McGraw-Hill, originally presented at the September 9th work session, as shown in the below exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
This was the curriculum that Mrs. Banzai had presented on September 6th and was available for public viewing at the board office. We didn't hear anything.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number 43, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the agreement between Raising Canes and the Berea City School District for athletic sponsorship during the 2022-23 school year, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
This was a sponsorship that Mr. Justice had arranged through Canes. Good addition.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 44, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the quote from Gridiron Guy's Construction for roof repair costs at Grindstone Elementary School, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
I think this is what we talked about before. This is just the bids, and it shows you the second quote that we had.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Treasurer's update.
Tonight on your agenda, the July and August month-end reports are linked in there under the treasurer's update. I'll spend a second going over the August one. Basically, the expenses for, through August are running right where they're supposed to be. A concern that we have right now is our revenue is down, and our revenue is down about 1.4 million due to tax collections. If you remember the May forecast, we did receive a significant bump in taxes last fiscal year. Basically, that was because of delinquencies that we received that. We had a rather large taxpayer that was delinquent and ended up paying in the spring. So, but we're just going to have to keep monitoring our tax revenue. Basically, if this holds true the whole year, then our cash balance will be lower than what I had anticipated. I'm working right now on the November forecast, and we will keep monitoring the tax revenue as it's coming in. But basically, again, expenses are right where they're supposed to be this time of year, and our taxes are down about 1.4 million so far.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the financial statements and the total payments to vendors for the month of August 22, as shown, wait, that's not the right thing. The consent, I apologize. It's recommended that items E3 to E8 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved.
Second.
Everything's routine on the agenda tonight. There is an additional fee that we're asking, few fees that we're asking the board to approve for the high school and the middle school, drug and alcohol classes and vape education classes. We will pass that fee on to the students if they still get in trouble and have to take classes. Yes.
Or of course, for people that are bound and have a need.
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Minutes approval, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes from the August 15th, 2022 regular board meeting and the September 6th work session, as shown in the exhibits.
Are there any additions or corrections? Okay, roll call, please.
I'll move to accept the minutes.
Second.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
There is no legislative update. Legislature just came back recently. And Board of Education comments.
I want to remind everybody about the Titan tailgate happening this Friday. September 23rd, from 4:00 to 8:00 at the high school, there will be food trucks, and the Education Foundation is selling Kalahari raffle tickets. I think they're $5. I was thinking, even if you don't have little people in your life, it would be a great prize to win, to give away to somebody. I hope everybody supports that raffle, would support the Education Foundation.
Can I add a little bit to your update? So this is, and we're going to put this out this week, but Dr. Smithberger and the high school have also been working on expanding the food truck tailgate to also include basically a community tailgate prior to the homecoming game. There's going to be inflatables or inflatable? Flatable? Face painting, we've got the cheerleaders performing, band performing, so we're going to, we hope the community comes for more than just food, but just to come and to be a part of festivities before the football game.
What time does this all start?
Time is.
Food trucks arrive at 4:00.
Four.
And the band is performing at 5:30, drill line at 5:30, cheerleaders at 5:45, band at 6:00.
Thank you.
And inflatables getting here at 8:00, so we'll pretty soon early.
Beat the crowd.
Take your run early.
Last meeting, we started doing shout-outs. So who'd like to go first?
Sure. A pre-shout-out, September 24th, this upcoming Saturday, is the Mid Park 60th Birthday Party, so the Mid Park Alumni Association, from 1:00 to 4:00 at Mid Park is having a celebration. So for those Mid Park alum, et cetera, or friends of Mid Park. Also, shout-out, I was at the Berea Arts Fest this past weekend and walked over to the area, I think the street by the post office, and our Berea Art Department, he was there and had a nice display of K-12 art there. Just once again, in this great culture of art that was there, our kids were well represented and did a great job of personing the booth.
I want to congratulate Julie DiFrancesco and Katie Street, who were awarded courtesy awards from the Berea Chamber of Commerce at the Grindstone Award banquet in the last week. We also had three students, two current students and one alum that received Future Leader Awards at the same ceremony. Lily Henry, Tommy Henry, and also Rose Henry received the Future Leader Award. So two of our educators and three of our students honored at that ceremony, which was really cool.
Congratulations, and I'm going to try to pronounce the names properly, forgive me if I don't, but it's Isabella Baglier and Dmitry Ermakov. They're a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. Great achievement. I also congratulate their parents, their family, their friends, and teachers, and others who helped develop them into the people they are over the past 17, 18 years, that they were able to achieve this academic honor. Also wanted to, I don't know if it's a shout-out or just, Friday night, my wife and I went to the game up at the Finney Stadium, and I had never heard attendance announced before, but last Friday, they announced that there were 17 or 1800 some people there. I thought, what a cool night. It was just a beautiful night, people just came out, parents, students, people from the community, just to watch kids play, watch the band, watch the cheerleaders. High school kids just in their student sections, middle school students, you know, hanging out with each other. I just thought it was a nice, a nice night. Nobody in particular, just whoever was there, congratulations to you for having a good night.
I'd like to shout out to Mrs. Kariniak and Mrs. Alomaker over at Big Creek for having a celebration of grandparents' day last week, and they had a little singing presentation as well, and it looked like, it looks like it was very well-attended. And then also, at the high school, they, the Chinese teacher, Ms. Chang, celebrated the Mid Autumn Festival, which is also known as the Moon Festival, and it's a traditional festival celebrated in Chinese culture. And students were able to participate in a traditional Chinese tea ceremony with their teacher. That was pretty cool, too.
Okay, any committee reports?
The Safety and Security Committee last, was a large group presentation last Tuesday on the 18th. They did a phenomenal job. Most of the SROs were there, and so it was a great question to answer, give and take with a lot of community members, to hear about how much time and effort is going into making sure our students are safe in schools and the proactive and constantly upgrading what we're doing to make sure we create a safe environment.
Okay. Can I have a motion to move into executive session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Mac?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for coming, thank you for watching online.